Just on any order, starting for the inconvenience here. Please rise and join me in a moment of reflection on a business as it forces through. Please join me to pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which we stand, one nation, united in the miserable, the liberty and justice for all.
Clerk, please take the rule.
Alderman Bassel.
President.
Alderman Bassel.
Here.
Alderman Clifford.
Here.
Alderman Key.
Here.
Alderman Kromarski.
Here.
Alderman Lewandowski.
Here.
Alderman McGovern.
Here.
All right, we actually do have one special presentation tonight. John Hanley, please join us this evening.
Good evening, my name is John Hanley, 7121 West 130th Street. As some of you know that I'm a pretty big volunteer here in the city. Do a lot of photography for the Art Committee, Beautification Committee, and I also am a photographer with Honor Flight Chicago. Honor Flight Chicago took a hiatus this year because of the COVID pandemic, but we always like to honor our veterans that are, have signed up for the program and are not able to go this year. And I've had the opportunity to photograph our Phillips when he went, Joe Taylor, who was the city prosecutor, I believe, and, you know, Phil Tortoriucci. I'd like to honor one of our veterans today with a sign for his, front yard.
Put that in your front yard.
Thank you.
You bet. Thanks for your service.
Congratulations, Jerry.
Thank you.
All right, under the consent calendar, we've got the approval in minutes from the City Council meeting from August 18, 2020, along with the approval of the payroll and voucher list for the period ending August 28, 2020, and a proclamation for the Constitution week for September 17 through 23rd of the year 2020. Then I move with the consent calendar.
Second.
Move by Alderman Kromarski, second by Alderman Violet, the discussion. Roll call.
Alderman McGovern.
Yes.
Alderman Lewandowski.
Hi.
Alderman Kromarski.
Yes.
Alderman Bassel.
Yes.
Alderman McGovern.
Yes.
Alderman Key.
Yes.
Alderman Violet.
Yes.
All right, those are still bits this evening, a couple remarks I'd like to make tonight. First of all, as many of you may or may not know, about six or seven years ago, we started a dial-a-ride program with the city where individuals can get the call, the number we have set up, it's on our website, and get a ride, whether it be to a local doctor, Jewel, Walgreens. Many of our seniors take advantage of that, and it costs $2 to go and $2 come back, and it's very reasonable, gets people around the town. Based on, this is a program, we work out the pace, and they provide the van, we provide the driver, and it's worked very well over the last six or seven years. What has happened, COVID, pace basically shut us down until we could retrofit the van to accommodate the people who are COVID-proof, if there is such a thing. So we have finished that to their specifications with some, with some shielding from the driver to the occupant, and now the program itself will start next Thursday, Thursday, so again, people who use it, please feel free to call. There'll be some limitations on how many people can be in the van, but it is available and it's a great program for people who can't get around, or just may need to run out and pick up something and have no way to get there. We've got so many people, you know, by themselves that may not have access to transportation. Another program, we've got August 3 at the train station, will be an e-waste program. We run these about four times a year with allied waste, and this will be the program that'll start, you say that morning, Saturday morning, I believe, and if you've got any electronics that need to be disposed of, I know it's hard to get rid of TV sets and monitors and alike, and rather than try to break them up and shove them into your garbage can so that people don't see them, you can always just take them over there, and it's amazing, some of the old radios and TVs that come out of basements to go to that e-waste program. So again, that'll be on October 3, we'll have that over at the train station. Obviously, I've been field for a number of people, some in this room, some not, maybe on television as we broadcast this later on, with the closing of some of the schools in the area, you know, whether it be temporarily or, you know, we know how long, we've had to make some, try to make some accommodations within the city, so the Recreation Department has set up some programs, along with Lake Catherine, to help people with the day programs for their kids, some cases, there's some homeschooling programs I know at Lake Catherine, so, you know, good. Use the website we have provided for the state, try to find out what's available for you. I know it's an inconvenience for many people, my daughter happens to be a high school teacher and she's got two kids, and they're going to school, and, you know, scramble, as far as she has to be in school all day long in her classroom, and the kids are supposed to be going back to school next week, we'll see how that goes, but that may change, and I know some people, 128th, for example, was going to have people in school, and all of a sudden, based on the positivity rates that came up within the state, who actually specifically was in Payless Heights, had to make a, about face and come up another program, so, we're trying to provide some programs for people and kids to accommodate the parents through these trying times. That being said, I probably can't emphasize enough the idea of wearing the masks, and provided by the state mandates to wear masks all the time, you know, maybe going into a restaurant, the server should be wearing masks, you know, going in to pick up a pizza, you should be wearing a mask. You know, last week, I kind of used the analogy, back in the day, before seat belts, some people thought it was an inconvenience to have seat belts, now it's kind of a way of life, so try to make this a way of life. I mean, if you're trying to save people's lives, this is one thing that we can do as individuals, and try to stem the spread of this COVID virus, and hopefully, you know, shortly, we'll get some control of this and get back to some sense of normality, if we find out what really that is, so, again, please do whatever you can to try to slow it down, and the mask seems to be the best way to do that, so I'm glad to see another one here, obviously I can't work, I can't talk, but I see one here in the audience wearing them, and I really appreciate your compliance in that matter, it's important to everybody here. City clerk, anything here?
No.
City attorney?
No.
Communications?
I would like to move that, we move, rightly, to item 13 on the agenda.
Second.
Okay, if that has, we can do that, but the only we can do is-
When we get to the standing committees.
The standing committees, we can move that up to the first standing committee, right?
Okay.
All right. City clerk, you said, or city attorney?
Thank you, I'll report.
City attorney?
Do you have an order, or?
Communications, anyone here?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Now that I have my breath, I'd just like to say, I'd just like to say thank you very much, we lucked completely off guard. I didn't expect it. Apparently, we're talking to my wife, I don't even know her.
Wouldn't be the first time.
But this, I really appreciate this so much. I'm on the list to go, and I have three of my friends on the list with me, and in addition to Alderman Phillips, who was before me, and actually lived right across the street from me, my own father-in-law was on another, on a road, and I just wanted to say thank you.
Thanks for your service.
That's a huge, um, yeah.
Just to relate to that, and thank Mr. Hanley for letting Jerry through, Jerry, a little history, so, Purple Heart, Vietnam, the times. I'd like to show you some, I know you can't see, we can't see it up here, but I'll just show you this. That's a picture of Jerry when he was 19 years old. That background's North Vietnam, 500 yards away, lead man in point patrol, second battalion Marines, Vietnam, 1966. That picture came out of, does it look magazine?
Life.
Life magazine on the front cover, and I found it, we made this in letters, they would, that's him when he was 19, so congratulations. The guy that took that picture was killed. He died, he was on his third or fourth trip, and, kind of, he was killed, and his brother put together a great big book on it, and I'm very, I'm very honored.
Just a point of reference, I was in eighth grade in 1966, Jerry, thank you.
I still go back, I still go back to my alma mater, Mount Carroll High School, every year, and I make a presentation, and I did it at Memorial College, for about seven years. Again, I say thank you very, very much.
Any other communication, Jerry? Right, thank you. All right, citizens wishing to address council, let's start from the side of the room, in our way, anyone like to, anybody want to address council? Okay, all right. Oh, yes, I'm sorry, sir.
This is, this is a regard to the Payless Heights gas station, so I'm going to follow up from where I was a couple weeks ago, and-
Sorry, your name and address?
It's Brian Stack, 12849 South Shoshone, and I realize that you guys have votes, and I understand that, but with that said, what I do want to know is that, there was an online survey, Bob and I, you're well aware of it, the total number as of 10 minutes ago was roughly about 260, total votes, 75 against, 25 for. Bob, you stated in the regional that you felt that was a low number, just in terms of a survey, so, while I understand that, one thing I want to keep in perspective is, when we take a look at electoral votes, Bob, when you were last elected, there was only roughly 940 that elected you, Dolores, there was only 39, Michael, there was 273. My point being is that the number that we got here is actually a pretty decent amount, based on what we see across from the averages, and I want that to be noted. We don't have a huge number of people voting, we're not in the thousands, right? I think if we took the 940, that's 7, 7.4%. So I just want that to be noted in terms of, if it's not being a lot, for one project, you have 260 plus votes, I think that's actually a pretty decent amount, considering what I'm seeing overall on the average of paylists. Secondly, we talked about different brands, I think last time, with Panera and a couple others that did not want to come to Payless, and it was interesting, I spoke with a colleague in Highland Park, and they have a very similar neighborhood, there's that three-block radius in Highland Park that's very similar to our Payless, and he's very involved with the community, very involved with businesses. Ironically, 80% of those, 85% of those are all small businesses, and I think when you take a look at Payless Heights, one of the reasons that I moved here was because of those small businesses, I'm a very big advocate on small business, and I think when we take a look at the big picture of Payless Heights and the future of Payless Heights, I think we have to take a look at small businesses. I don't think we necessarily need a Panera or any other large brands across the board, so I just want that to be noted as well as we take a look. Lastly, just in terms of, we'll call it overall, how we look at Payless Heights, and again, I don't want to focus on the past, I want to focus on the future, because I believe that we have a fantastic city, and I do believe that you guys are all trying to ask to do so, at the same time, I do think we need to make some updates and take a look at the future, and I do feel that from a big picture standpoint, you know, I'll go back to my colleague that I was talking to in Highland Park, where, you know, he had stated that the city elected officials to work with those small businesses, those small businesses own all of those areas, but they were able to work together, keep it updated, make those changes, and work together, and I think that's what I'm asking, and I feel like if we were to do that in that central area, the rest of these areas would follow, and we'd have more businesses or small businesses than Payless Heights. Thank you.
Any other comments? Any committees? Oh, sorry, your name and address?
The, the gas station, the proposed gas station.
No, your name and address?
Oh, sorry, Tom Keating, 12814 South Park Avenue. You know, I know we were just talking about any small businesses, and I think that would be a huge piece of land for a small business to kind of take over, I think it's a great spot for, you know, it's exiting Payless Heights and it's spotting up against Worth, and I don't know how many other, I don't think there's a lot of gas stations on the east side of Harlem, leaving, at least from 130th, leaving, and I personally drive to 294 every day to go to work and stop at the Thorns at Worth, a mile down the road, two or three times a week, get coffee, get gas, and I think that'd be a great location and a great project, and really dress up that corner to kind of leave Payless Heights and, you know, leave the neighborhood and going into Worth and really realizing, you know, the, the nice businesses that we have, and, I mean, the curb appeal that's kind of bringing is also, you know, it's going to dress up that corner, it's going to give the, the individuals that that senior living, maybe a place to take their grandchildren to and come visit, or take a, take a walk down, you know, somewhere they can't go now, they can't cross, likely that intersection, to take their grandchildren, their grandchildren can't go there by themselves, and I think it'd be a great spot to, to house a place like that, to also accommodate those residents as well, so.
Thanks. Any committees?
No.
Sorry, I called.
Hello, my name is Maria DiCaprio Santa, I live at 12032 South 75th Avenue, longtime resident, I'm also the chairman of the Public Arts Commission, and I have watched our city go in a lot of different directions, and none of them have been very creative. Now, if you remember, in the past, we had the Buick RZA light dealership vacant forever for the developers, so we're sitting over there, that was sitting for years with nothing on that piece of property. I would like to see all of you think creatively. Looking at this picture, these brick and mortar buildings that you're saying are so beautiful, there is no creativity, nothing special about this. You're welcoming people into our town, or you're leaving our town, and it's making a really nice impression on everybody to see another gas station in a 7-Eleven that looks kind of like a penitentiary. This does not have curb appeal. Even as a developer, couldn't you come up with something better to present to us than this? This is not going to enhance our community. We have talked about for years trying to brand a Payless Heights and make it something special. We have Lake Catherine, we have some very nice assets to our community, that piece of property is going to be ruined with this development on here. We should have embraced this piece of property to do something unique for our town. Imperial Oak Brewery in Willow Springs is an example, they have a white path that goes through their little town, and they have set up a lovely little place where people can sit down and have beers in, food trucks come, and it's a little destination, and people ride there and they ride back. Here we have our white path that cuts through our town, what do we offer anybody to stop and spend their money on? So, no one is going to stop at a 7-Eleven, and no one's going to take their grandchildren from the senior center to the 7-Eleven. Excuse me, have you been to the 7-Eleven in Payless Heights lately? I run in and I run out. That place is filthy on the sidewalk, there's a really strange crowd of people that are starting to visit that 7-Eleven that I'm not personally happy about. You have to watch your car now in front, lock your doors to run in for your cup of coffee, and if that goes into this, into your new slot, now you're going to leave another one empty, and the traffic is so fast through that intersection, has anybody looked at this lately? You really think it's going to be easy to enter and exit that, that corner? So again, I'm always standing up here in this community, being the one that says unpopular things, but I really don't care, because I think it's so frustrating to think everybody here is in favor of this development. How can you really think this is the right way to go for our community? And the other thing is, I think it is very important to be envision for the future, and I have said this over and over, and I'm going to say it again, our town is not looking to the future creatively, it's the same old, same old, and I'm really tired of it, I think a lot of people here are tired of it. I think we demand better for Payless Heights. Thank you very much.
Hello, we saw cans, 12742 West 8th Avenue. I'm just jumping right up with what she said, the same thing, I just wonder if anybody's concerned, now we have this retirement home right there, and now we're going to put a gas station. What just happened yesterday at 135th and Ridgeland, in armed robbery? So now we have a retirement home with a gas, and it's been happening at many gas stations, even the north, up north. So now we're welcoming another avenue for people to commit a robbery, and there's older geriatric people living right there, with a huge parking lot, full of cars, just, I think it's just an open, um, open range for unwelcome behavior, with elderly people living right there, that should be considered, definitely. On top of the fact that, I just think it's very unwelcoming to look at a gas station, what kind of, if you look at all our gas stations, after so many years, they kind of fall into disarray, if you look at, I think just about everyone I've looked at, there's none that look very well up kept. Where's, where's the balance? Where are we going to be able to kind of keep that on an upswing for something that, you know, people are entering and exiting our town? That's just, I think, I hope everybody would consider that.
My name is Nick Robles, 6851 Ed Wood Road. I just wanted to speak on the 7-1 development, because I've been here for two years, and for the two years, I've always thought something would come up, something that would service the community, also, all the while embracing that, when I moved to Payless Heights, one of the things I admired was all the small businesses that you would see going up and down that road on Harlem Avenue, but with that said, I also want to speak on behalf of my retired, re-aged parents and in-laws who live in the community as well, and who could potentially become community members of the assisted living community, and one of the things that they take pride in is their independence and walking and, you know, having grandchildren, and myself also, planning to have children in the short-term future, I think giving them the avenue to take it upon themselves to, to keep their independence and walk to a place that would have, you know, ultimately serviced their community, not having to leave to go too far, and it is a, a much prettier looking development, I will say, than what we see on 135th. Aesthetically, the dwelling, you know, it, it looks very modern, but I, I do want to state that having nothing there, it's hard to compare when you see the videos or the photos of what could potentially be. Also, with Lake Catherine down the block, as a, someone who aspires to have children someday, I can see myself walking from the lake over to the 7-Eleven to get a slushie or a slurp beer, or something like that, and my parents and in-laws have friends in their community, and I can only imagine, you know, having to run down to 7-Eleven to get a cold one and enjoy some, some late-night drinks with your friends, can only serve the community. And as another big proponent of small businesses, I just want to state the fact that some small businesses have not survived what we've seen in the last year and, and recent recessions, so, at the end of the day, it's, I think about things that can service our community for the long run, in spite of, you know, recent events, I think that an establishment such as this can serve for the long run. Thank you.
Ready zoning?
I'm ready to zone. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. 13 on the agenda, motion adopted, ordinance allowing a 7-Eleven slash mobile mini-mart gas station operated specially using 7150 plus College Drive in the northeast corner of Harlem and College Drive to allow for planned unit development consisting of two block subdivisions, 7-Eleven mobile gas station containing approximately 4,000 square feet, a mini-mart convenience store at block one, and a retail building at block two, the proposal U D, located in northeast corner of Harlem and College Drive.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Clifford, second by Alderman Kromarski. Questions? Roll call.
Alderman Violet.
Yes.
Alderman Clifford.
Yes.
Alderman McGovern.
Yes.
Alderman Lewandowski.
No.
Alderman Kromarski.
Yes.
Alderman Bassel.
No.
Alderman McGovern.
Yes.
Alderman Key.
With great respect for the ZBA zoning commission, BEAC, and all the residents who've been very vocal, no.
Motion carries.
I have a report.
All right. Finance?
Alderman McGovern.
Mr. Mayor, I'll report to see them.
Public safety, Alderman McGovern.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I have a couple things, okay? First, I'd like to make a motion to adopt an ordinance declaring vehicles owned by the city of Payless Heights and the police department as surplus and resole.
Second. Moved by Alderman McGovern, second by Alderman Clifford. Discussion? Roll call.
Alderman Clifford.
Hi.
Alderman Bassel.
Hi.
Alderman McGovern.
Yes.
Alderman Key.
Yes.
Alderman Violet.
Yes.
Alderman McGovern.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
All right, next, Mr. Mayor, just one little thing, I was contacted by one of our citizens before, and he was concerned about the rallies that we had here in Payless Heights. They were back, the ones over back in, I believe, June. One was sponsored by Shepherd High School, the other was by Trinity College, and I just wanted to, his concern was three things, okay? First, were there any permits? And the answer to that was no. They came in to talk with the police department, police department refused to give permits, and they just said that they're going to go anyway, and that was both, both, both the students from Shepherd and both the students from Trinity College, okay? And they did. They went, people from Trinity, or people from Shepherd High School, total maybe 100, 150 people, and they walked northbound Ridgeland Avenue, up to 127, and then they returned, right back up Ridgeland Avenue, back to Shepherd High School. They had a very peaceful rally, no problems at all. They went back to, they went back into Shepherd High School, which is not in the city of Payless Heights itself, actually, and they had their protest, they had some speeches, and when they were completely finished, they dispersed nice and peacefully. And his concern on that, on that, and the one in Trinity, was why didn't the police turn around and do something about all these people that were unmasked, excuse me, and the reason for that is, it's kind of like a match, you don't want to ignite the fire, okay? Let the people turn around and have their peaceful protest, let them have, walk up and down the street. Our police department, really- to City Hall, into Kennedy Park, they used the gazebo for their, for their stage, they had their rally, they had all their speeches and everything else. They returned right back to Route 83, right back to the college. Whatever they did to the college, I don't know. And after that, they peacefully, so we had two rallies in two days with no problems at all. Now, both of them, nope, none of them wore their masks. And I, as a former police officer, these guys here who work on duty will tell you in about two seconds, if it's peaceful, you just let it go. And hardest thing they had to do in two days of protests was block 127th Street and block Route 83 in Harlem. And the third part of this question was how much did it cost the Payless Heights Police Department? Well, it did tally up the figures and everything else. I don't get the figures for what it cost Public Works and I don't have the figures for what it cost any other, any, any other part of department program. I know the police department itself cost about $10,000 to maintain safety. Everybody here, all our citizens, all our property, and I'd say a word. To me, I think that was money well spent. The rallies were going to happen, so there's nothing else you could do. So I just personally, on a third, on my own personal thing, I want to compliment our police department and the county sheriff because they took part in the one on 127th Street or the one on Ridgeland Avenue. And I want to personally thank them for how well-trained they were to do this kind of stuff so peacefully, stay away, keep calm, no verbal abuse, no anything. We had two rallies, we're done. And I say thank, thank you, gentlemen. Mr. Mayor? Just to let you know, I was at the, okay, sorry. Minnesota Grounds Property, Alderman Bassow? Yes, Mayor, I have five items on the agenda this evening. Item number eight, motion to approve entering into an intergovernmental agreement with Central Management Services for the purpose of selling excess Public Works equipment inventory on the Illinois ID website. Move by Alderman Bassow, second by Alderman Kamarski. Discussion? Go call.
Alderman McGovern.
Yes.
Alderman Bassow.
Aye.
Alderman Key.
Yes.
Alderman Violet.
Yes.
Alderman Clifford.
Yes.
Alderman McGovern.
Aye.
Alderman Key.
Yes.
Alderman Violet.
Yes.
Alderman Clifford.
Yes.
Alderman McGovern.
Yes.
Alderman Lewandowski.
Aye.
Alderman McGovern.
Yes.
Alderman Key.
Yes.
Item number nine, motion to approve selling excess Public Works inventory on the Illinois ID website. Move by Alderman Bassow, second by Alderman Kamarski. Discussion? Go call.
Alderman McGovern.
Yes.
Alderman Bassow.
Aye.
Alderman Key.
Yes.
Alderman Violet.
Yes.
Alderman Clifford.
Yes.
Alderman McGovern.
Yes.
Aye.
Yes.
Item number 11, motion to approve the installation of concrete paving at the back of the Public Works garage in the amount of $8,500 by Crest and Sons Cement Contractors. Move by Alderman Bassow, second by Alderman Kamarski. Any discussion? Go call.
Alderman McGovern.
Yes.
Alderman Key.
Yes.
Aye.
Alderman Bassow.
Aye.
Alderman Key.
Yes.
Alderman Key.
Aye.
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 Item number 11, motion to approve the installation of concrete paving at the back of the Public Works garage in the amount of $8,500 by Crest and Sons Cement Contractors. Move by Alderman Bassow, second by Alderman Kamarski. Any discussion? Go call.
Alderman McGovern.
Aye.
Alderman Key.
Yes.
Aye.
Alderman McGovern.
Yes.
Alderman Key.
Aye.
Alderman Bassow.
Aye.
Alderman Key.
Yes.
Alderman McGovern.
Yes.
Item number 12, motion to approve replanting the area around the Veterans Memorial with JGS Landscape Architects in the amount of $8,100. Move by Alderman Bassow, second by Alderman Kamarski. Any discussion? Go call.
Alderman McGovern.
Yes.
Alderman McCamersky.
Yes.
Alderman Violet.
Yes.
Alderman Lewandowski.
Aye.
Yes.
Yes.
Item number 12, motion to approve replanting the area around the Veterans Memorial with JGS Landscape Architects in the amount of $8,100. Move by Alderman Bassow, second by Alderman Kamarski. Any discussion? Go call.
Alderman McGovern.
Yes.
Alderman Kamarski.
Yes.
Alderman Lewandowski.
Aye.
Alderman Bassow.
Aye.
Alderman Key.
Yes.
Yes, definitely.
Alderman Violet.
Yes.
Alderman Clifford.
Aye.
And that's the end of my report. Thank you, sir. Recreation, Alderman Key. No report, Mr. Mayor. Roads construction, Alderman Kamarski.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, no report.
Licensed permits or franchises, Alderman Lewandowski.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Motion to adopt an ordinance updating the city code with regards to permits for door-to-door solicitors.
Move by Alderman Lewandowski, is there a second?
Second.
Second, Alderman Bassow.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Listen, updating to our ordinance, any solicitor coming to your door has to be licensed by the city and we perform a background check which includes any way through, oh, it's going to release and the solicitors have to take them.
All right. Thank you. Go call.
Alderman Violet.
Yes.
Alderman Clifford.
Aye.
Alderman McGovern.
Yes.
Alderman Kamarski.
Yes.
Alderman Lewandowski.
Aye.
Alderman Key.
Yes.
Alderman McGovern.
Yes.
Alderman Bassow.
Aye.
Alderman Key.
Yes.
Alderman McGovern.
Yes.
Alderman Bassow.
Aye.
Alderman Key.
Yes.
Alderman McGovern.
Yes.
Alderman Bassow.
Aye.
Alderman Key.
Yes.
Alderman McGovern.
Yes.
Alderman Key.
Yes.
Alderman Bassow.
Aye.
Alderman Key.
Yes.
Alderman McGovern.
Yes.
Alderman Key.
Yes.
Alderman McGovern.
Yes.
Alderman Bassow.
Aye.
Alderman Key.
Yes.
Alderman McGovern.
Yes.
Alderman Lewandowski.
Aye.
Yes.
Yes.
I also move to approve change order one, final change order with Era Valdivia Cat Tractors for the Route 83 Pump Station Rehabilitation Project in the amount of $2,725,000.
Move by Alderman Violet, second by Alderman Lewandowski. Any discussion? Go call.
Alderman Bassow.
Aye.
Alderman Key.
Yes.
Alderman Kamarski.
Yes.
Alderman Lewandowski.
Aye.
Alderman Violet.
Yes.
McGovern.
Yes.
Alderman Clifford.
Yes.
I move to approve proceeding with the 127th Street water main improvements with areas incorporated in the amount of $63,520,000.
Move by Alderman Violet, second by Alderman Lewandowski. Discussion? Go call.
Alderman Violet.
Yes.
Alderman Key.
Yes.
Alderman McGovern.
Yes.
Alderman Bassow.
Yes.
Alderman Kamarski.
Yes.
Alderman Lewandowski.
Aye.
Alderman McGovern.
Yes.
Alderman Clifford.
Finally, I move to approve pursuing the first right of refusal regarding the purchase of property located in 7752 West 123rd Place.
Move by Alderman Violet, second by Alderman Lewandowski. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Close. Motion carries.
That's the end of my report.
All right. Special reports, business and economic development, Alderman Key. No report, Mr. Mayor. Cable TV, Alderman McGovern.
No report, Mr. Mayor.
Any old business? Any new business? Irritable motion matured?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close.